With that being said, I'd like to call the order, the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, if we'd all rise for pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. I did skip the roll call. I can't say that everybody is present on the council this evening. With that being said, approval of city council meetings for August 20th.
You mean the minutes?
I'm sorry, the minutes.
Second.
Thanks, Councilman Burgley. I have an appro- uh, I have a motion to accept the council minutes by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Announcements, committee of the whole, Tuesday, September 17th at 5:00 PM, city council meeting, Tuesday, September 17th at 7:00 PM, and planning commission meeting, Tuesday, September 17th immediately following the city council meeting. Park Recreation and Culture Board meeting, Tuesday, September 24th at 6:00 PM. Moving on to business items. Designating civil and prosecuting legal services, Resolution 2019 terminating appointment as city attorney. Ms. Wood.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you, we have, well, we had the RFP that went out in July, seeking for new civil and prosecuting legal services. Part of that, we did discuss, or all of that, we did discuss at committee of the whole. It, we did have three firms come in for interviews for civil services, and then one firm that was qualified that came in for prosecuting services. Interviews were held. We felt that we made the great recommendation, which was to appoint Ratwick, Roswick, and Maloney for civil services, and GDO Law for prosecuting services. With that, the first resolution before you is to terminate what we have as our annual appointment of civil, or a city attorney for both civil and prosecution with Clark Jocelyn, and then the following resolutions will be appoint, to appoint the civil legal firm and the new prosecuting legal firm.
We can, can we make a motion in one lump sum for all that, or do we need to do them separately?
You can do them all together, if it's motions like that.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
I'd like to mention, uh, thank Clark for the services for all the years that he's done here. Appreciate it, Clark, and, uh, gives you more free time in the evenings, though.
I appreciate the opportunity to have, that I've had to serve all these years, and I wish the city of Vicenti all the best, and I look forward to working with the new council, uh, in the transition period. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Clark.
Thanks, Mr. Jocelyn. Moving on to J4 Resolution, Setting the 2020 Final Budget and Levy Meeting. Mr. Becker, I think you're gonna take this as a whole, if I'm not mistaking. I'll wait till you get up to the podium, sir. You're still on. It's kinda short.
The three resolutions could be adopted all together or separately in that order. It would, it would be, it'd be wise to adopt them in that order, if not all together at once. Um, one of, a little PowerPoint presentation, I'm not gonna touch on the material that's in the packet. Uh, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to read that, and I'm just gonna hit some of the highlights on, uh, on the preliminary budget and levy adoption. So, first thing I wanna do is just remind everybody that's, that might be watching on YouTube, or in the audience here, or the council members, um, just kind of the basic components of municipal budgets. Um, first, four, four basic categories. One is operating revenues and expenditures, intergovernmental revenues and expenditures, capital projects, right? Those are items that are engineered, is a way to think of that, right? If the city engineer is involved, that's a capital project. Final category would be capital maintenance and replacement. So, these are items that are not necessarily engineered, but, you know, these are the trucks. This is, uh...
Hold on, Mr. Becker. You can barely hear him. Okay. You gotta forgive us here, everybody. This is literally our first time using this new system, so we gotta work all the bugs out. I just can't hear ya, Mr. Becker. I don't know if you can set it on the podium, or, we should've gave you a wireless mic.
Well, yeah, it kinda works a little bit. Um, so, the last category is capital maintenance and replacement. Um, I just kinda put together a little summary of, uh, revenues and expenses, uh, for each category. Um, for the most part, each of the four categories is gonna be funded in part by a levy of some type, either general fund levy or debt levy, um, and also by rates, right? So, these would be, uh, rates that we set in the fee schedule, um, whether it's for the general funder or for enterprise funds. Um, in the expense, uh, column, I just gave a little bit of understanding or perspective for how those different categories work. Um, the last category I put on there is probably the, the real important one, and that is the competency. Um, with regard to operating revenues and expenditures, um, every city has a pretty easy time being competent in that, right? You're gonna look at six-month averages, um, three- and five-year averages, or six-month actuals, three- and five-year averages. Um, you're gonna do some zero line budgeting, where you just start from scratch every year. You don't just give any department anything, right? You make your case for it. Um, that's, that's not hard for any city to do. Um, intergovernmental revenue, other government agencies with regard to that stuff, they're gonna keep you honest. You're gonna be, you're gonna be compliant by default. They are not gonna let you fail. Um, capital projects, most cities are entirely competent on that, based, based on the amount of money they pay to the engineer. City engineer has a vested interest in getting those projects going, and, and through that, you end up being competent. The last category there is the difficult one. Capital maintenance and replacement, right? Handling a new roof, tuck pointing on a building, cars and trucks, that is the work that you need to be looking out 10 or 20 years, and most cities do not do well. Most cities will look out five years or not even five years, and most cities just don't do it well. From my perspective, that's where there's a durable competitive advantage, potentially, for the city of Vicenti. And you see that in the budget. We've talked about that before, that, putting together a 20-year capital plan, but just wanted to reiterate, uh, from my perspective, the importance of that. From my perspective on fiscal management, it's pretty straightforward. It's pretty simple, but it's worth mentioning that fiscal management requires that you manage those four components of the municipal budget. You can't just look at one or two. You can't neglect any of those. Cities often will neglect, especially the capital maintenance and replacement. Um, and it's important to consider those associated timelines. Um, capital projects often, um, because they're engineered projects, you're often not looking out farther than 10 years. Um, capital maintenance and replacement, that is stuff that you probably can predict 20 years or more out into the future, um, but that requires a lot of time and effort. Ultimately, if you're gonna put it into just one simple sentence, fiscal management is small ups and downs in the levy or tax rate. You want things to be nice and even. You want things to go up slowly. You want things to go down slowly, not wild ups and downs. You want, you want changes that are reasonable and that residents and business owners might reasonably expect. So, to the meat and potatoes of tonight's meeting, um, the proposed levy, we have this broken down in parentheses behind each levy. I've put where the fund, uh, the fund that is associated with that levy. Uh, general fund levy, um, $2 million, up a little bit from 2019, and we've got now two new levies, um, one for Fund 920, that's our capital maintenance levy, that we've talked about. We're putting together that 20-year plan. We can level out that, uh, those expenditures, so that, uh, or level out the, the funding, right? So, we take that roughly quarter million dollars a year, and some years we might spend $500,000, and other years we might spend $30,000. But by putting that together, you know, comprehensive, coherent plan, we can level a consistent amount year after year and take some of that, take some of that variability out of future levies.
Mr. Becker, so I'm, I'm seeing this right here. In 2019, you're saying there was nothing in the capital maintenance, nothing in street levy?
Correct.
Nothing in the abatement levy? So, there was nothing budgeted for that? How long has it been that way?
Abatement levy is another item. We'll come back. I'll, I'll get to that, and I'll address that briefly, but yeah, we, for capital maintenance and replacement, um, that's a project I've worked on basically the entire time I've been here. It's taken about two years to get to this first draft, 'cause it is a lot of work, which is why most cities don't put together a 20-year plan. It is a giant amount of work, and it was a lot of work for me and for all the department heads. Um, but this is the, the, this is the importance of that. Um, if you don't have that, you don't really never know if you set your levy correct. You don't really ever know if you're gonna be short $40,000 in 14 years, or you're gonna be short 1.4 million. You can't know. This is the key, and this is, and this is why we've got this in your, in your packet today, outlining all those expenditures going out into the future.
But I guess this question is, is there was nothing budgeted in 2019 or 2018?
Correct.
It is on.
Yes. Yep, yep. So, these are...
It's not necessarily new categories, it's just actually being budgeted for.
Yeah, and it's an important caveat here, is that this, this is money that doesn't go into the general fund, and we touched on this briefly at our Committee of the Whole meeting. We don't want those two items, the capital maintenance levy and the street reconstruction funds, we don't want those to go into the general fund levy and then transfer them out. If we transfer them out, they count as expenditures and artificially decrease fund balance as a percentage of expenditures.
But in the past, it was, correct?
In the past, we didn't levy anything for street reconstruction, and to the extent that we did levy for capital maintenance and replacement, it was, it was kind of an ad hoc thing, and it would've been within the operating budget. It would not have been separate. So, we do want those to go, those funds will go to Fund 920, period. Those will go to Fund 425, period.
Your earmark, just for the specific...
That's it. That's it. Um, and to use them for anything else would require council action. That, so that's it. That's where they will go, and that's what they'll be used for as prescribed. Um, EDA levy is something we introduced in 2018. We, we talked about in 2017, 2018, COLLECT was the first year that took place. Um, that would basically just help to offset the transfer that otherwise, um, using to fund the EDA.
So, there, there's a gentleman that I told you was gonna be very interested in this. You recall that conversation this morning? The gentleman is behind you raising his hand. So, he's, he's obviously got a question already.
So, what I see here, and I'm gonna speak up so I can hear you clearly, is a 20% increase in the levy next year, with the proposed levy?
Yeah, correctly correct.
So, that would be a small increase, small decrease, or this would lead to small increases, decreases in the future taxes. Is a 20% increase in the next year for something within 20 years, the result said, we don't know if we need it or don't need it. We don't understand it. We're just guessing at this point. So, we're just gonna jump a 20% levy?
Um, I, I, a few points. Uh, one, I wouldn't say that we're guessing at all. Um, while it's a 20-year plan, I've run most of the expenditures out to 2018.
Okay.
So, we're going a long way down, and we identified everything right down to tuck pointing, City Hall.
Okay.
I mean, as much as we can possibly figure out. I would, never is perfect till about the third iteration, but I would put it at 95%.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I'm thinking, oh, is it 20% jump them up for whole levy, three increase taxes for citizens and businesses, right?
Yes.
We're gonna say substantially, but, you know, it's just a 20% now, down per person.
Mayor? Sorry, I'm sorry. Could you please state your name and address?
Just come on up, if you would. You just come on up here, if you would. Mr. Becker will share the mic.
Matthew Larson, 1302 Ironwood Court, Southwest.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. And just, I'm just trying to get a full understanding of the, that's a big jump, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And that's not a small increase, small decrease?
Correct. The, part of the issue is, is what the levy ended up being set at last year.
Okay.
Um, the levy was set twice in December, once originally, then further forward, later in the month. So, that's part of the, right? So, when you look at a historical perspective, and I'll, and I'll touch on this later in the PowerPoint. When you look at a whole historical perspective, market value and levy amounts basically go up and down together, right? We had a great recession, market value's went down, levy goes down. Market value goes up, we gotta provide more services, the levy will go up. What I point out later in the, in the, in the presentation is that the better metric to be looking at is tax rate.
Okay.
Tax rate puts you at a more level comparison between cities, and also gives you a more level comparison between years. So, you can have a data set that you can look at for 2005 versus 2020 and say, do we get better or worse, right? Um, the levy isn't gonna be helpful to look at from 2005 to 2020, 'cause not knowing anything about any community, just because of inflation, I can guarantee the levy will have gone up.
Okay.
So, that's, that's why I would address that. Um, the other part of this is, one of the new levies there, the street reconstruction levy, we added this year because there had been street projects that had previously been identified back in 2010, and had been originally slated for work beginning in 2012. None of those projects happened, because no funding had ever been identified. And so, in May, I took to, I took to, um... So, in May, I took to Committee of the Whole, a plan for actually getting all those projects done, right? Um, some residents have been waiting nearly 10 years for, for street reconstruction, and, and they ought to at least know that there's a plan. Um, at that time, I presented three options to the committee, um, really ended up boiling down to two options, and the two options were, we either start to levy now and pay for this stuff upfront with cash, or we wait until the project occurs, and then we issue bonds, and we pay, we pay interest on that. The difference ended up coming out to, the difference of about, um, it was about $3 million total for all those projects, um, if we paid cash, and that if we pay, if, oh, I forget what the number is. The difference was, it was about $3 million and $4 million. The difference was $900,000, was basically at that time. The committee said, well, we don't wanna spend $900,000 in interest. We're gonna take, we're gonna bite the bullet. We're gonna start levying now, and we're gonna pay for these things in cash, 'cause otherwise that $900,000 is additional amount we have to levy later, right? So, that's, that's that component. Um, and the capital maintenance levy, um, yep, again, kinda just biting the bullet to get that going. Um, but the issue is, is not so much whether or not things are replaced today. The issue gets to be is, when you're 14 years out, and suddenly squad vehicles haven't been replaced. Um, you've got roofs on multiple buildings that haven't been replaced, and suddenly you get to that point where you realize, oh, shoot, we need 1.4 million. We didn't have a plan. Now, your only option is to issue debt. Problem with issuing debt is, again, it's expensive. It's like buying a house, and every time you issue half a million dollars in debt, you're gonna pay about $125,000 of interest. So, if we start talking about over a 20-year plan, spending, say, $6 million bucks on capital maintenance and replacement, well, you're rapidly, well, you're well over a million dollars now in interest. Um, so, trying to get in front of these things now and avoid that, those interest costs later on, is, is, is that long-term trend in moving us toward, um, reducing variance in future levies and, and tax rates, and getting us to a point where things are a little more level, and getting us to a point, hopefully, where as market value grows, the levy will still go up with the, with the market values. We'll start to see that tax rate go down.
One last question before I let you go. So, does this cover everything? Every street that's been identified, you know, as we go from $1.5 million a year, or pay for these streets, it's never, we're never gonna be like, oh, man, we missed, like, we got about another 20%?
This funds every project that we have identified.
One thing you have to realize, Matt, was, the street construction levy, we, actually, the previous mayor and previous council, we worked on that about two years ago, started deciding that we needed to start doing that, because there, and that's why we, we had engineering went out, and they specifically looked at street, we'll just say, Ironwood, Ironwood Court, okay? That street looks like it'd be about five years, it's gonna have to be resurfaced. So, to stop that from happening was to do the seal coating, you know, and, and do the preventive maintenance to prolong that, so that we don't have to replace that street and tear it all up. One of the things that just came up, and we kinda basically said, no, we're not gonna do this, was on some of the, uh, the, uh, that we took in, the houses that we took in, can't think of the right word.
Annexation, yep.
Annexation, was some of them that can't get sewer and water to them right now. Well, we could've wrote out a check for, you know, a million and a half dollars, got them their sewer and water immediately, or do we wait till that street needs to be done, which then, at that time, we have to do the infrastructure anyway. So, th- those are a lot of things that has been worked on, um, for the last couple of years. It's not just something that just popped up. It's just something that we've had to start pushing further and further to. Now, the street construction, that actually was in the city budget before I was even on council, and I've been on council for 10 years. It was kind of, when times were tough, we slammed the brake, there was, brakes were slammed on it, and that money got used to help keep our taxes down low. So, i- it's, it's a growth issue, you know, construction, you know, you know as well as I do, is going to go down at some point, hopefully never like it did in the 90s, when everything got hit hard here, but, you know, we have to plan for that, and it's, unfortunately, that's the only way we're gonna do it. Rather than having to bond, or, like you said, borrow $5 million, and then paying over a million dollars in interest, we'd rather have the money there, sitting there, collecting interest, used when it needs to be done.
A lot of this money, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Becker, but a lot of this money was kind of saturated to lower taxes before I even walked in the door.
I would, I would say that's a subjective thing. I'll, I'll avoid.
With a smile. Okay. Fair enough.
But I mean, it's just a lot of these things that were...
One last question. So, some of this money was coming out of the general fund before?
Yes.
So, we should see our general fund, you know, is there any account to that? That now those, that budget will be lowered, or that, you know, these numbers may not be correct, as we are still able to figure out some margins. We will pull money from the general fund, or, whereas with the levy, we won't.
I- it, in my time, prior to rolling out this plan, capital improvements were identified and paid for, um, with funding that was left over, right? It was sort of, run the budget, see if there's extra money, and if there is, then figure out what we will or will not do. Um, you know, and, and that's okay, but, you know, unfortunately, that, the, at least potentially, leaves you in that situation where, oh, shoot, in 14 years, now we're 1.4 million short, and this is a way to make sure that we're at least in the right ballpark. I can't promise you that the capital maintenance and replacement levy is gonna be dead on, but I can tell you that when we are able, when we have it set up in this manner, and we're able to look at this yearly and update those prices, adjusted for inflation into the future, we can make small tweaks along the way, right? We can say, all right, 256 was just a little bit off, let's make that 259. Well, 256 was a little bit more, next year, let's make it 251. We can make small adjustments going forward in future years. The goal here is, is that to get this implemented, and then be able to see single-digit increases or decreases. And the idea would be to not see any double-digit increases or decreases. The idea that we've done the math well enough ahead of time that there would never be an opportunity for double-digit increases or decreases. That's the goal.
What's the common tax rate, Mike? Are you getting to that?
Yeah, we've got some sides on tax rate, some, some...
Are you good, Mr. Larson?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and, and if, and if there are any other questions, you wanna come see me in my office anytime. I'll give you all the time you want. You want 20 minutes or two hours?
He'll bore you with it all, Mr. Larson.
Whatever you want. No, not a problem.
Better bring a lot of Bud Light.
Yeah, bring a lot of Bud Light.
And thank you for the question. I, most, most finance directors actually would wish that more people would ask questions, so, appreciate it. Uh, so, I'm getting back to this. Um, we talked about the EDA levy. Abatement levy also goes into Fund 101, and that is listed separately only because the Department of Revenue requires that. So, that is the funding, uh, that is the abatement, projected abatement funding for the hotel project, right? As part of their, part of their business deal. But we have to list that separately. It has to go to the county separately, uh, per, uh, Department of Revenue regulations on that. Um, then we have the debt service levy that's in bold, and the four lines below that are not in bold, um, summed to that, that debt service line. And so, that's where you see the, and then at the bottom, you see the total levy. Now, we get to the other component, right? We've got the levy, we touched on a little bit, um, and now we get to the tax rate. Again, tax rate is great because it gives you a little better data point for comparing over years and comparing between cities. So, in 2019, we ended up with a final certified tax rate of about 62%, and right now, we're looking at, um, so about 67.8.
Which is still below average.
Yeah, so, and I, and I added this in, um, 'cause I think it's always, you know, I, because the tax rate is a good metric to look between cities and between years, I, I gave some, some historical, uh, perspective on that. The 15, or the, uh, the five-year average, right? So, 2015 through 2019, uh, average tax rate was about 77.5, right? So, we're, even in this, with this tax rate, we're, we're well below the five-year average. And if we go back 15 years, from 2005 through 2019, um, it's 68.5, so we're, we're still yet even below the 15-year average. So, from an historical perspective, we're not, we're not doing bad here, from a historical perspective. And you're getting, the goal here is to, to get this to, um, to even out and to, to not be so variant over time.
And if I recall right, December 4th of 2018, because I sat in the audience, there was a levy of 2.6 million with a tax rate of 69%. And then, uh, December 18th, all of a sudden, it, it took a dive to 2.4 with a tax rate of 61.8. And now, it's, as you say, 2.9 at 67.8. So, that's kind of the curvy motion that you don't wanna travel.
Yeah, the, yeah. Last year, the originally approved, um, projected tax rate at the time was, you know, 69%, and then later revised in, later that month, immediately before the end of the year, was revised at just under 62.
Another thing you gotta look at, too, is when you get your tax statement, it isn't just the city of Vicenti taxes on there, 'cause this, this thing came up, I don't know, a couple, three years ago, when this chamber was packed. People were livid. They just looked at their tax increase of 40%. They didn't look at the school tax. They didn't look at the county tax. The city tax, if you looked at their tax statement, went up like 4%, and the rest of the, rest of the percentage was through the county and the school bond taxes. People don't look, they, they just see their tax, and they don't see, yes, you pay more when you live in town, plain and simple. You're paying for, you know, the street plowings, and, you know, if you lived out in the country, you paid for township road plowing. They don't plow your street in front of your house, you know? So, but they didn't look at those extra taxes, you know? We had a guy that, a guy, he's, he's a good kid, just doesn't think, and I sat down with him after it, and I showed him it, and he looked at me and said, wow, was I way off. You know, my taxes did, went up 40%. I said, look at your whole tax statement. You, so, the city goes up this little bit, but everything is this, and they see this, and they're not correlating, you know? Do any of us wanna do all this? Absolutely not. But, we want our streets plowed, we want our grasses mowed, we want our parks nice, we want, you know, the police protection. We want all these things done. The only way we're gonna do it is by having to have the tax base, or to do our bondings and, and putting the money off to these other funds. We stole a lot of money from the general fund over the time. Liquor store put a lot of money into the general fund. Liquor store puts a ton of money into the general fund. And then we keep them bare-bones what they need, and then we take all of here. I don't wanna see that. I wanna see that liquor store do well, expand it. We, we gotta keep, rob, quit Robin Peter to pay Paul. So, to do that, we have to do these other, you know, shifting of these funds to do these things.
Now, we have to pay Paul and then move forward and quit Robin Peter.
Yeah, this, this budget does have a fair amount of transfers out to, to repay other funds that the general fund had been borrowing from in the past, and, uh, that'll continue for, for some years. Uh, I forget if it's 158,000 or 185,000 annually. It's gonna, that'll continue for 10 years. So, there's, there was quite a bit of money borrowed from, uh, from other funds, and, um, you know, that, that, those transfers back out to those funds, um, you know, they, they float that levy a little bit. They make that levy go up a little bit, but those are obligations. We've gotta get, uh, get repaid. Um, this is just a brief graph of levy history, and the important thing to note here is kinda that cyclical curve to it, right? Goes up, uh, great recession hits, market value goes down, levy goes down. Market value starts to improve, levy goes, goes back up. That's, uh, that, that's how you're gonna see that in just about every community, uh, in the state. Um, this, you see a little bit of the same, right? You see a little bit of the same curvature, but it's a little flatter. But this is, this is gonna be a much better perspective to understand. This is where we've been for tax rates, right? And, um, you know, you'd like to see this be, the highs not be quite as high on tax rate, and you'd like to see those lows not be quite as low. You wanna see that be a lot more level than you would... than you would graphing a, a tax levy or a market value. In this one, through some good questions, we've, we've kind of tackled a fair amount of this, I kept the, property tax calculation is a really complex thing, and I'm not even going to attempt to get into the, the nitty-gritty of it. I've kind of touched on, you know, why I prefer to look for comparisons, but looking at the tax rate versus the levy. But ultimately, in, in its most basic form, you're taking property value times the tax rate, and that's how you're getting your, your property tax total. And it's basic, and in the, in the, the calculations are considerably more complex than that, but at its most basic core, that is what is happening. So, that's, that's all I've gotten, so if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to field those.
This is actually a plan, Mr. Becker.
Yeah.
And I would say if it wasn't a good plan, I'd be the first one to say, Mr. Becker, what the HE double hockey sticks are you doing? But this is a plan, not the direction we wanted to go by all means, but we do have some gaps to fill and things to make up, I guess we could say, to keep it PG.
We, we have a plan, and, and I can't promise, I can't promise anything in the future, but I can play probabilities, and I can play the numbers, and, and decrease the likelihood of double, double-digit increases or double-digit decreases.
Well, Mr. Becker, I've said it before, I wish you could manage my checkbook for me.
I, I agree with that.
I think you, 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 we've had conversations over conversations on these things with you, and I think you're doing a fabulous job, and I, you know, like I stated, that we don't want to see us doing this, but it's, it's got to be one of those things that's got to be done. And we got to plan for the future, we just can't, you know, women hope, some would say poke and hope, but, you know? So, I'm going to make a motion, you pass.
I do got a question. What would that tax rate be if that second levy didn't take place?
Worst-case scenario, the same. Best-case scenario, definitely lower.
And then I thought, I, I, I'm sure there'll be quite a few residents in the city of Isandy to say, I thought this was supposed, uh, bleh, I thought this was supposed to be dropped 10% again. Somebody made that promise, if I recall right.
Regardless of any comments outside of this room, what I would say is, is that if the council directed me to cut the tax rate or the levy an additional 10%, I could do that. That can be done. But I, I guess I wouldn't recommend that. I think that it would be, to, to borrow Councilmember Lundin's words, we'd be Robin Peter to pay Paul.
We'd be driving around with all tires on our fall trucks.
Yep.
Not buying salt and sand, and then we're going to have people mad because we're not getting the streets sanded, and, and, you know, grass is not getting mulled, and.
Yep. And, and keeping up on a capital maintenance plan is actually, you know, some great examples on why you do that have come up in the last eight months, as we've been replacing some squad vehicles, right? When you don't have a plan in place that department heads can count on and understand when, for example, squad cars are going to be replaced, unfortunately, that gives that particular department, in this case, that gives that police chief a perverse incentive to spend money fixing a vehicle that he knows better than to fix. If it was his personal vehicle, he'd never fix it, but if you can't give, if I can't give him a definitive, this is when it will be replaced, then he has every incentive to go ahead and spend $3,000 fixing a vehicle that he knows is not worth it. This plan says, here, five-year squad year, squad cars get replaced, and now you know whether or not fixing that vehicle is a worthwhile investment, and you have certainty.
Well, prime example was, we just replaced two squad cars. That should have been in rotation already, which they wasn't the funds for, and we ended up having to do it because now it was beyond repairable, and we had to do it, I mean.
We were putting a Band-Aid on a severed artery, so to speak, and it just wasn't working anymore.
That's, that's.
So, I mean, that's a prime example, and that, and I know that one of those squad cars was slated to be replaced two years ago, but we just kept fixing it and fixing it and fixing it, and it kept going to the shop, going to the shop, and it, it, this way, you know, our chief is going to be, you know, held accountable for his budget, what we're, what we're planning on, and always should be.
Yep.
You know, and I mean, he's putting these vehicles on rotation, sure, they don't have a lot of miles on them.
Yep.
But let's put an hour meter on those vehicles once.
Yeah.
You know?
Absolutely.
It's, you know, it's, they're running 24 hours a day, just to move, and that's just as hard on them as grinding up a road, so.
Yeah, and it's, and it's a good example of, you know, what every department head in every city ends up facing, is that if you don't have a good capital improvements plan in place that they can actually count on, every department head in any department in any city will eventually find themselves in a situation where they make a decision, do I replace this equipment? Or, I'm sorry, do I fix this equipment that I know I really shouldn't? Or do I not? And if you can't give them a definitive, here's when it's going to get replaced, all you're doing is giving them the incentive to fix it and throw money at, throw good money at bad. And that's, you know, normally, that's a kind of behind-the-scenes, you know, making the sausage kind of thing that, you know, finance director and department heads are privy to and see on a regular basis. But residents often don't, and a lot of times council members don't, but in the end, that, I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why a good 20-year capital improvements plan is so important, because then you don't waste that money in other areas.
Well, I for one appreciate your hard work, Mr. Becker. And just keep trucking away, sir. I do have a motion to accept these three in, as whole, by Councilman Lundin. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Burgley. Any other discussions, questions, comments, concerns, gentlemen? None at this time, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Again, Mr. Becker, thank you very much, sir.
Yep, thanks, Mike.
Good job, sir. Moving on to J7, ordinance amending city code, chapter 87, article 1, keeping of certain animals, Ms. Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. The Committee of the Hole has reviewed this ordinance two times. The last meeting was on August 20th, and directed city staff to go ahead and post the ordinance, it's been posted. This is for allowing chickens within city limits. Before you tonight is, the action is to actually approve the ordinance.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Burgley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Resolution approving final plat for Sun Prairie 5th addition, Ms. Selman again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sun Prairie addition was planted in 2005, and there were several outlots within that plat. The applicant is asking to plot one lot, it was Outlet J, he's asking to plot it into one residential lot, it does meet all of our minimum requirements. All the proper drainage utility easements have been put on, on the plat. City engineer recommends approval, planning commission recommends approval, and so does staff.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Burgley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Approve, approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley, and a second by, second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Therefore, we stand adjourned.